Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the organizational meeting of the Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education. This is our first meeting for the 2017-18 school year. I'm going to start off by congratulating Jeff Danielson and Doug Heater. They were both re-elected to the Board this year by the voters. And I'm going to swear Doug in since he is here. And then we will continue. Raise your right hand. You want me to hold it up?
Yeah. I have to do it. I, Douglas Heater, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Board of Education for Hyde Park Central School District from 7/1/17 to 6/30/2020.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to go into executive session.
Can I have a motion?
No. Can I have a motion, sorry, to go into executive session? Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed?
Oh, Green. I have to do it in Green.
Okay. Now we're going to executive session. Raise your right hand. Is that too much? Do you want me to hold it down?
I, Dr. Green Reichen, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Superintendent of Schools of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2017-18 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Yeah.
Got that.
There's always an out clause.
I guess I don't have to do that.
Yeah.
Because I didn't say that. I don't have to do it to the best of my ability.
That's why I stopped.
That's okay.
Okay. One second.
Can I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? If everybody could please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next thing I'm going to do is swear Jeff in remotely.
Right. You'll have to read it, and he's going to have to repeat it back.
Yeah. He actually, I emailed it.
Oh, oh, you didn't? Oh, cool.
Do you need me to read it to you, Jeff? Or are you good to read what I said?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So stand and raise your right hand, please. Go ahead and say the oath.
Say again?
Say the oath.
Okay. I, Jeffrey Danielson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of a Board Member of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the term of July 1st, 2017, to June 30th, 2020, according to the best of my ability.
Okay. Thank you.
Cool. You're still on, right?
Yep. You're on. Okay. May I have a, may I have nominations for the President of the Board of Education?
I'd like to nominate Doug Heater.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dan Duffy.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations going once? Going twice? Three times? Can I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second.
If everyone could please place their vote on the yellow slip ballot in front of them and pass them to me. I will in a minute.
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to do it before you looked down.
Oh. Before I decided. And Jeff, remotely, how would you like to vote?
Dan Duffy.
Okay. Do I have to read each one?
Yeah.
Denise, Denise Berry voted for Doug. Steve Mirmeier voted for Doug. Dan Duffy voted for Doug. Perry Sheldon voted for Doug. Mike Zagorski voted for Doug. Doug voted for Doug. Doug is the new President of the Board. Congratulations. And I now hand it over to you.
Yeah.
Here's the script if you think you need it.
Okay. Okay. Now, at this time, I have nominations for Vice President, please. I would like to nominate Dan Duffy. Do we have any other? Going twice? Okay. Thank you. I guess as a formality, we should still do these, right?
Yes.
If you could just fill out the forms.
And Jeff, your vote, please.
Dan Duffy. Yeah, Dan Duffy.
Dan, congratulations. You've been elected the Vice President.
Okay. So that takes care of that point. And then we're back on to the regular. We have one agenda modification. Are we going to pull that?
Yeah. Do we do that now? Or do we have to wait till we get to the, through the regular, once we get to the regular meeting? We have a change on 16, 16 point something in the consent agenda of the regular meeting. Do we complete the reorg meeting?
We don't.
Or should we remove it now?
But we don't adopt to.
We should do it now?
Yeah, because we don't adopt to.
We don't adopt to agenda. Very good. Okay. So we need to, geez, remove, if I talk slowly, it'll seem like. Yep. It's on the personnel. Okay. It's 16.11, the personnel agenda. And we are not removing the whole personnel agenda, just one section. We are going to remove the appointments for the winter JV basketball coach and the winter coach for seventh and eighth grade. Yeah, modified. It's listed as Coach 7-8 Basketball under Winter. We'll remove this and we will have this sorted out for the August 24th agenda, if possible. It's a winter sport. We have a little.
Okay. Any other modifications? Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as modified, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Any recommendations?
Where are we?
Been quiet.
Oh, is, are we? Where are we?
Any pride?
Yes. We're not there yet.
Pride's way down.
That's another regular meeting, I think.
We should be on seven of the consent, of the.
Yeah, we're on. I got, I got.
It's an organizational meeting.
What is my?
Should be on seven point, yeah.
Well, okay. Let me just restart it. Something, something's wrong. I think in moving it from home to here, it didn't translate. Okay.
Seven point one.
Yeah, now we're better. Okay.
I saw it's seven. There you go.
Okay. It helps if you're on the wrong, or right meeting when you're. Okay. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda items for the organizational meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. That brings us way down to the district clerk. Out of the office. I guess I get to do that.
I should do.
At this time, the district clerk will take her out of the office. I'll come over.
I, Joanne McCullough, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York State, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk for the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2017-2018 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to, we have a motion for 9.01, borrowing resolution. I should probably read these. "Obeit resolved, the Board of Education hereby empowers the Superintendent of Schools to borrow sums of money and authorizes the President and Vice President of the Board to be given the authority to sign necessary documents as needed prepared by Barclay Damon LLP, Albany, New York, to issue appropriate short-term notes according to local finance law. Tax anticipation notes, T A N Ss, and revenue anticipation notes, R A N S, R A Ns." Do we have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
It's supposed to be a poll vote, according to this.
Poll.
Is it a poll? Oh, I'm sorry. It is. I didn't scroll down. Okay. You're, this is your job.
I'm sorry, Doug. We're doing the district clerk and the treasurer. So do we skip the?
We're on 9.01. It could, it could be, you had the same problem I had, because I got on the wrong one.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Oh, no.
And it is a roll call, so.
Okay. Doug?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Perry?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a motion for 9.02, approval of meal prices, as indicated in the, in the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. Now we have the, let me just, we have our committee thing. I have a motion for, or can I have volunteers, I guess, for the nine point, the designate board members to serve on district leadership team currently, well, not called.
I've served on that committee and I'll continue.
Okay.
I've served on it, many, and I'd like to continue.
Okay. Perry, Jeff, and myself, I'll stay on it.
Okay.
These don't require a vote, though, do they? No. No, we're just, we're just assigning. All right. And now we need to designate board members to serve on the audit committee. Hopefully, you all saw the note about the qualifications. Denise and myself were on. Dan served admirably. Unfortunately, it was, the charter doesn't allow it, somebody who has a relative in the school district to serve. So I will be happy to continue on that. Denise?
I'll stay on it.
Anybody else? We can have another one.
I'll be on it.
Okay. And Mike? All right. Designation of board members to serve on the policy committee, that was Denise and me. I'll stay on.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on it.
Okay. Anybody else want to get on? Well, can't. Okay. Board member to serve on the Energy Education Advisory Subcommittee, that was Stephen Perry last year.
I'm willing to continue on that committee.
I'd like to continue.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Board member to serve on the SAVE Committee, Jeff and Mike were on that last year.
I'll stay on the, on that committee.
Okay. Mike, you want to stay on?
I can. It's, it's at a bad time for me to go.
Okay. All right. Anybody else interested?
Can somebody tell us a little bit about what that committee does?
I can. And it's changed a little bit in that it is absorbing the Comprehensive Health Advisory Committee. Most of the regular attendees of that committee are on both, and we invited the few people that were not regularly attending SAVE to join. And, you know, I looked in regulation and policy and about what's required. So there's, it, there's a lot of connections between the two, so we decided to, to put them together. So it meets every other month for a couple of hours in the morning, and part of the timing is around when first responders are available, firefighters and, and police come, there's building representation. And then, you know, we meet as needed with, whether it's SROs or facilities or transportation separately, but we bring those topics there, and so we're including wellness and wellness policies to that work, even if it needs to be ad hoc as we, if we revise a policy.
I would be willing to serve on that committee.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Perry. 908, approve membership to serve on the Dutchess County School Boards Association Executive Committee. Last year, that was Perry. You want to continue with that, Perry?
I will continue unless someone else feels that they would like to.
I'd like to know more about it. I mean, when, when do you meet?
They meet the.
First Thursday.
First Thursday of every month.
At?
At BOSI's.
At what time?
7:00 PM. Usually the meetings go from 7:00 PM till 9:00 or 9:30 PM.
Any board member can attend.
So I don't have to be the designated member to attend?
You could attend any, anyone that you want to.
Maybe I'll try that. I'll let you take the reins and I'll just.
Okay. All right. 909, board member to serve on.
And can we go back to 908?
908?
It was written in the agenda says approve membership. Is that a vote, then?
That was written last year.
I think we have to send the name in. And I think, does, does that mean that BOSI's gets to approve it?
No. I don't, I don't recall what we're doing.
Oh.
Well, that's a good question. Probably actually approving our membership to the committee.
It was a membership, yes, yes.
To that.
To the organization.
Right. Because we do pay a annual due on that as well. Good, good catch, Jeff.
Right.
So do we need to vote on that? We are expending money, so.
It's lumped together, so. It means if we're going to put somebody on there, we're going to pay the dues.
Right.
I don't think we need to separate it. So do we need to vote?
All right. Let's just cover, kind of a motion to.
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion on that?
That's it.
All in favor? So it's definitely worthwhile. It's a worthwhile thing, though.
Yeah, it's good. Yeah, I think that it's.
Thanks, Jeff. Let's move on to 909, government liaison. I believe that was myself and Perry out last year. You want to?
Yeah. Well, I have to admit, I don't remember much.
We didn't have any, there was no clause to meet with the town.
The government.
Or the other government.
But also, what is that? What is that government?
Well, coordination and cooperation between governments, for instance, the town of Hyde Park and the school board, or the school board and.
Sometimes politicians want to meet with us, you know, us.
Yeah, there's been times when there, there's been a need to have someone.
Right. Go to, go talk to Susan Reno for some reason.
Yep. Again, I'm willing to continue on that.
Okay. I as well.
I'd like, I'd maybe fill in with that one from the audit committee. So I'll, I'll join that group.
You want to join that group? Actually, it's a good idea for the Vice President to be on it, to be the truth. So it's me, Perry, and Dan. 910, board member to serve on the Central Schools District Negotiation Team. Last year, that was Jeff, myself, and Steve. I would like to continue doing that. Jeff, do you want to stay on that?
Yes, I would.
Steve?
Sure. But I'd step aside if somebody else is interested.
Anybody else interested in being on the negotiation team?
What contracts are up this year? Do we have any contracts up?
CSCA, HPUE are up at the end of 2017-18.
Okay.
Good thing I stay away from it.
Anybody else have an interest? I mean, one of us could step aside. No? Okay. And I have a board members to serve on the Personnel Subcommittee. Last year, that was Denise, Dan, and myself.
I'd like to continue.
I would also. Denise, you want to stay on?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay. Would anybody else have a strong desire to be on? We can't have four.
Yeah, that's fine. If you, no, that's.
No, I'll, I will step aside if you want to be on it. All right? Okay. So that's Denise, Dan, and Mike.
It nearly will be as busy next year as it was this year.
All right. No, I mean, more people should try, people should.
No more injuries.
Try these different things for this.
So, so just a clarification then on the Personnel Subcommittee, since it will be official tonight, then we're going to need to pull that Personnel Subcommittee together for the Assistant Principals, so then I would contact the new members.
Right.
The, the one we're voting on tonight.
All right. I didn't skip over anything, did I? Okay. 912, board member to serve on Special Ed Committee, well, I believe that was Dan and Jeff. Jeff, do you want to stay in that?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Anybody else want to join in? Yeah, I know, Dan. I just.
Oh, I guess you thought I'd say yes.
I just put that on. Okay.
Quick question. I don't see the Technology Subcommittee here, or the Technology Committee.
Yeah, the, the Tech Committee is going to, one of the things that we talked about last year and during our presentations, both the technology presentation and the DLT, is that we have to move away from planning technology separately from our strategic plan, so we're going to weave it in, recognizing that there may still be a need to have the group meet ad hoc or an ad hoc technology committee, but now that the smart schools bond is set and we have a tech department, the planning for technology and its use in the instructional program shouldn't be separated from the instructional planning.
Except that we can't have more than three members on committee, and I think it would be really important if Steve wanted to be able to be part of those discussions.
So the district leadership team was Perry, Jeff, Doug.
I'd be willing to step back if, to make an opening for Steve at that point.
I would certainly like to see Steve, Steve on that.
Steve, you're interested. I'm not trying to speak for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested. When, when are those meetings?
They toggle between daytime meetings for the instructional team and evening meetings for the bigger events, for the, where we have the community members. And again, a lot of the focus is going to be, and again, you could come to the instructional meetings, too, but a big focus is going to be planning the capital project. And the other big focus for the district leadership team is rolling out the community awareness of our four Cs and our student assemblies for the four Cs, and have to start talking about where does digital learning fit in our planning in the incorporation of the four Cs. So a little less nuts and bolts, but.
Yeah, if I'm not depriving somebody else of something they really want to do, I'd like to sit in on that.
Go for it.
So Perry, you're out of that one, then?
Right. Thank you.
Just like the wellness and the safety, it just.
Okay. I guess that brings us to the regular business meeting. Now, we got any pride?
Yes.
We got summer school.
I, we, yep, we have, well, the.
Summer Bridge.
Yeah. And you know what? I was going to say that was superintendent's report, but it, it is a point of pride. In fact, July 5th started our extended school year program, K through five. That went off without a hitch, and the students are in there and smiling, and it's just a wonderful place to visit. The, on July 10th, started our summer bridge program and our, oh, and July 5th also started our Havoline Middle School program. I actually, yesterday, made a visit to the elementary program and the middle school program and ran into Doug, who was also visiting. So I toured the elementary schools. I know Aviva was here the first week of the extended school year, and we got to tour the Havoline Middle School, and there were quite a few highlights going through, especially.
I mean, it's, it's, it's great to have that program, and I think it's starting small at this point. May or may not get bigger, but hopefully it expands. And it seemed to be working. I mean, the kids seemed really engaged. I was, I figured, you know, heck, they just got out of school and I'd be a little grumpy, but they weren't.
It, for some reason, it takes on a whole different atmosphere. I, I can never explain that phenomenon. They're in classrooms, they're with teachers, but it is so relaxed, and there's a lot of instruction, but a lot more activity and student engagement. When I went through Ralph R. Smith, they happened to be doing their dance time, and, which is great to get them physically moving. We have, we hired Mike, what's his last name?
Kirk.
Kirk, to run the elementary program, and he'd only been there a week, and as he walked me through the building, some of the students were very much engaged. Hi, Mr. Kirk, how are you? So, you know, they met a new principal and. So, you know, uh, they met a new principal and, and were very much engaged with them. Another point of pride was, uh, and today started, uh, the Regional High School. For the second year in a row, uh, we are the site for the Duchess County Regional Summer High School. Uh, we have four other districts participate, three or four other districts participating, and then a few more send their students in to take Regents exams. And as I said, today was the first day because it can, some construction at FDR High School, we have the middle school program at, in the C-section. The students enter and exit the C-section, and the, uh, regional summer school is, for the high school, is in the A wing, and they enter and exit from a door in the A wing. My understanding was they had a simultaneous fire drill today because that's a requirement. And so the, uh, middle school students went out their respective wing, and the high school students went out theirs. Um, so, um, that's been successful. And this is our second year as well of the summer food program, um, which is open to the public. People, uh, from birth all the way up to 18 years of age. And, uh, that is at our elementary school, Ralph R. Smith. Big sign out front saying we feed students here.
It's free for anyone 18 and under.
Yep.
Sir, I noticed a billboard on 9G. If you're heading south on 9G, it's, it's north of Violet Avenue, somewhere. Can't remember exactly where it was. Has anybody else seen that? And is that the program? It doesn't, it doesn't mention the district, but it's a, it is some kind of a summer-
Oh, oh, that was something else that was in the papers the other day. That's different.
Okay.
Haven't seen the billboard, so.
There was a write-up today in today's paper about it, which does mention Hyde Park School District as well.
I, I didn't see the billboard, but there is a, there is-
I saw the article today.
Yeah, there's another program.
I didn't associate that with what I saw the billboard of.
So I would like to say something about that. I think New York's, 'cause the program is through New York State, and I believe they've been advertising, because I did see on Facebook, people posting things about calling a certain number to find out where the locations were in your area. And I think that's the same program, but the advertisement is through the state. I didn't see that billboard, but if it's what I think it is, it's the same program.
So if they called that number, they would find out that there's a location at Ralph R. Smith.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I called the number when I first saw it on Facebook to see what was included in there.
Oh, and I'll just add that the students in the Havlin Summer Program are bussed over to have the free lunch as well before they go home.
Um, graduation, although it was hot, was phenomenal this year.
It was, it was a good time.
It was very smooth. The students were-
Mr. Johnson was very interesting.
Mm-hmm. And, and-
And a humble man for being, having had that level of a job in, in our government. It's, uh, uh, he's, uh, interesting. He was really interesting. And, and he had a good message for, for the children.
And, yeah, yeah, it was great. And the, the students were, seemed to be fully engaged in the ceremony the whole time. And, uh, after Jeff's prompting, hi Jeff down there, um, one of the things, he kinda caught my eye and, uh, realized that we had a student board member and how great it would be if he could hand out a few diplomas. So, uh, we managed to get our student board member up there as well to hand out a few diplomas.
He was really pleased. He was, he was quite touched by that, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. All right.
Okay.
Well, you might just mention all the other moving updates and, and the, oh, actually, we had a meeting that night, that's right, Thursday, so.
And then one other point of pride, and Bobby's gonna help us out here. As you know, at the last meeting, we talked about, uh, the, uh, request for proposal for architectural services. Where that is in the process is, um, they've submitted a contract, our attorneys are reviewing it, we should have it wrapped up fairly soon. So we are going to be moving forward, um, and planning, uh, what will hopefully be, once you see, uh, the, uh, the architectural rendering, then the board would make a decision whether or not, in the fall, whether or not we put this to the community for a vote. Should we get to the, uh, community vote for, uh, science labs and, uh, renovation of our HVAC, once you see the, um, proposal? The students, um, from our high school, uh, through our student government, put together a promotional video. We would certainly dovetail that with all of our traditional literature, and the architectural firm will also support us in whatever PR work. But because we had three students on our district leadership team, um, we really wanted to provide the opportunity for students to, um, uh, they spent, especially Joey Calazo, our valedictorian, was two years on the district leadership team. So we really felt it'd be important to have some students participate in putting together a video about why science labs, why now. And we, uh, had, uh, the PR people at BOSI's work directly with the students and the SGO advisor, and this is what they put together, so, uh-
I think you'll be able to see.
Um, we can hold Jeff up to see one of the screens? Yeah.
I'm afraid to touch it.
Oh, right, it's connected to something else.
Just turn it around, facing that way.
I know, I, I don't want to. Oh, you want me to see that one? Oh, I forget about that.
I can see it now.
Can you see it?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you get the lights or something?
President Lyndon Johnson is hopeful protests will remain calm as citizens continue to oppose both the war in Vietnam and segregation in schools. Tonight, stunning developments in our space program. During the Gemini Four mission, an astronaut opened the hatch and propelled to the end of an eight-meter tether while orbiting the Earth over the Pacific Ocean. Someday, we hope to see a man walk on the moon. Finally, tonight, Hyde Park will be cutting the ribbon on the new high school that has state-of-the-art laboratories. The new school replaces the one that former President Franklin General Roosevelt helped to plan for his hometown. He dedicated that building in 1940, and it will now serve as Havlin Middle School. Thank you for tuning in. Good night.
Hyde Park has a proud history. More than 50 years ago, the current FDR opened with state-of-the-art science labs. While adjustments have been made over the years, the district is now proposing significant upgrades to meet the current and future educational needs of our community. We want to fully support our students who are preparing to pursue high-paying, in-demand careers that require strong scientific skills and critical thinking.
Yes, we have a lot of great technology on boards that are really great to use, but there's limited space. It's not as long as you were, they're capable of technical. So, um, equipment takes up a lot of our storage, so we're not able to do a lot of the labs, uh, do the new equipment, because there's just not enough space for it. So we can do it in the hallways or in other, you know, places around the school.
This space really needs to be designed for the way we work today, because when teachers give sort of demonstrations or lectures, and we want to see like an example of it, we all have to crowd around the center table in order to see it, and it's not really a normal situation.
Yeah, there's a lot of times we don't get to finish classes, because a lot of people are waiting in the sinks, and we don't have time to finish, and we have to wait all day, which is just in the end, or last time.
First, our lab tables don't really make sense anymore. Most of them are mounted to the floor, and we can't move them around the way we need to when we work on certain experiments. In the rooms where they aren't mounted to the floor, there are electrical outlets that stick up and get in the way because we can trip over them.
The main counter is getting used by fat shades, and we need to do the experiments. There's not enough for everyone, and the ones you have aren't even working out well. So we need some more.
Oh.
Looks like a hurricane.
Hi, welcome to our show. Lots who is trending. Megan?
Thanks, Carly. First, I'd like to say I'm loving the new haircut.
Oh, thank you.
Twitter has just announced the top five trends for 2017, which include a lot of memes and many hashtags.
Here's a new one for you, hashtag space travel. For only $250,000, you can become a space tourist.
Wow, that's cheap.
I know. With a Virgin Galactic group, you can go see what's out there.
Back on Earth, we now head to our field reporter, Jane Doe, who is live at FDR High School in New York, to report on the science labs that were built before man had ever landed on the moon.
Thanks, guys. I'm here with Cindy, who's gonna give us a 4-on-1 about the science labs here at the school. Cindy, what's the buzz about?
Well, Jane, it's really exciting. Hyde Park will be voting on a proposal to update the science labs at FDR. It'd be great if we could modernize the classrooms to accommodate the college-level classes we have. We have five AP classes already, and science is so important for so many careers.
Thanks, Cindy. That's all I've got for you. Back to you in the studio.
Thanks, Jane. That sounds like a project that the community can really support. Thank you for watching, and have a great night.
Good night, everybody.
Please stay involved and invested in the Hyde Park Central School District as we prepare our students for the future. For more information, please visit our website, hpcsd.org.
So it's there in the waiting, should we need it? And, uh, I think even if we just use this mostly internally with parents and the students themselves, I, I just, I thought they did a, a fun and wonderful job with it.
Obviously, they must have used, released some of the new equipment that we have installed.
Who would be putting it up on the website? Like eventually, when we make the proposal?
Yes. Yeah, yep.
Okay. Um, for, under superintendent's word. That brings us to enrollment update.
Enrollment update. Okay, good evening. As per our board policy, and hopefully, uh, remote that works. Just a bad button, for sure. Let's see. Okay. Uh, we present, uh, an enrollment update. I start with the year 2012. That was the year where, um, we made the painful decision that our enrollment had declined enough to close one of our elementary schools. So here we are in 2017, and, uh, the total decline since 2012 is 403 students. Um, that's just a little graph, uh, to indicate the decline. This is the live birth data, and, um, we don't have it for 2015 yet. But as you'll see, our, our biggest dip in birth rates was in 2011. That's, that's a phenomenon, um, throughout New York State and actually beyond. Uh, they did find that the birth rate did decline, uh, the year of 2011. There's been some studies on that. But you'll see in 2014, it starts to raise again. So again, just at one indicator, this is prepared by the US Census Bureau, not by, uh, and this is for Duchess County. So what are some of the trends? In the years 2013, 14, and 15, we decreased on average about 97 students per year. And, um, previously, in the decision leading up to close one of our elementary schools, it was right around that mark. We were losing about 97 to 100 students per year. The last two years, 2016 and 17, the average is a decrease of 47 students. When I go give our, our budget discussion to our high school students, I always say, we didn't lose the children. It's not like we can't find them. Uh, it's just a decrease in enrollment, and they, they know that it's because people, a lot of reasons, people are, are moving away, people are waiting longer to have children, people are having less children, and, um, we don't have any growing industry in our area. But you will see, that's a big difference between the average, and again, these are just some of the numbers that we're watching. Um, again, the lowest birth rate was in 2011 with a value of 238. I think that's on average, children being born in Duchess County. And, um, but I'm not sure if that's what the value means. But the value for 2014 is 294, so there is an uptick here. Technically, um, this is, again, we, we reiterate this every year, if you go according to the state regulations and the number of classrooms, we are under capacity. But with all of the new mandates, um, whether it's academic intervention services, E&amp;L services, um, the fact that, uh, we like to deliver, uh, things like occupational therapy and, um, physical therapy and things that are not locker rooms, we have grown into, we're utilizing most of our spaces. Not all, but we are utilizing most. Again, uh, if need be, those are the services that could be relocated to rooms that are not full classrooms. We have also added four additional special ed classes since we closed HPE. It was five when I reported this last year, but we have, uh, we are pleased to say that enough of our students were declassified, that now, um, we only have four, uh, of the, of the five special classes that we added as we brought more students from out-of-district placement and created programs within our school district so that children could attend their, uh, district of residence. We, uh, we have diminished the number of classes because students have been declassified. And again, that was one reason to bring our students home. In years past, we talked about the success rate of where we were sending our students to very expensive outside placements, that we weren't seeing the results. We brought the students home, and we are seeing results. So that's not an enrollment piece, but, uh, good news. So our current capacity in strictly speaking, regulation classrooms, in the four elementary schools that we have, we have 81 class, 81 rooms that are regulation class sizes. Going into next year, we will need 65 classrooms based on our current enrollment. If we close a school right now, we're four classrooms short. And that's not, that's, that would mean also moving AIS and the way we filled up these other classrooms by using them for physical therapy, occupational therapy, and academic intervention services. It would mean taking any services that are in a full-size classroom and moving them to our smaller spaces. And, uh, would give us access to 61 classrooms, so if-
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Would that change if we redistricted?
No.
Okay.
The number of classrooms available, um, each school-
You couldn't balance that out amongst the, if you, it, currently, they're, like, say it's two sections, but they're light, but they're more than, than you could put in one section, so.
I see what you're saying. I don't have my, um, chart in front of me, but if you recall, when we closed Hyde Park Elementary, we had class sizes of 12 and 14. So that really, a classroom of 12, it's, we had two sections at Hyde Park Elementary. Really, that's one section. You would have one section of 24 versus two sections of 12. I'm, I've looked at the numbers quite a bit, and I'm pretty confident that we don't have any small classrooms that could be combined. At best, we might be able to pick up one, two tops. Because all of our sections are still in the pretty high twenties, and we don't have any school where we have, um, 12 students here and 13 students there and could be combined. So the total number of students, what we, what we do is you, even if you take the total number of students and our max class size is 30, and I did that exercise, um, you would still need- you would still need X amount of sections. So I already, now that I say it, I did that exercise to see if we combine. I mean, we might be able to squeak out one or two, but...
Okay. And if you move the 5th grade to middle school?
Well, if you move the 5th grade to middle school, you have plenty of room.
I have a question as well. So at this rate of declining enrollment, it looks like about 47 students per year. And based on the number of classrooms you have right now, which is that we need this 6 to 5.
Right.
So if this continues the way it is, I mean, we just have to seriously think about this discussion in three years.
Yeah, you would need to... Yes. And we're on the same page. So, yep, that's the timeline. Because if we continued at the same rate, it would be within two years to make the plan. And then, yeah. Again, you know, if you were absolutely forced to to do something now, it would cause a lot of disruption. And, but, within a year or two, it's going to be less disruption. If we keep going at this rate, there will be, it would be hard to justify not closing if the decline continues even at the 47 students per rate.
Well, you could have other factors. If we wanted to go, say, the community schools program that the federal government has, that would require extra space.
Yes.
You know, I mean, there are other things that could factor in. I'm not saying we should do that. I think it's a good idea, but, you know, let the voters...
Yeah. Actually, right now, if we went in the direction of community schools, what's nice is we would have the space.
Right.
Because every one of our buildings has extra space right now. Not enough to come up with 65 classrooms, but they have extra space. As inventive as they've been in occupying them for academic intervention services, we do have, in some of our locations, full-size classrooms used as storage or extra meeting areas. So my recommendation, and we'll look at the numbers again at this time next year, but my recommendation is that unless we see something totally different, we need to gear up for 18, 19. And that would be reconvene the committee. We should also follow the progress of the Bella Field and Hudson Heritage projects. Again, every meeting that we've attended says that any housing that is scheduled for these projects is 10 years out. Their plan is to do the hotel and the shops first, and then maybe further develop with housing units. They haven't changed that message. There's not a shovel in the ground. So at best, we're quite a ways off from seeing new housing for families.
Can you remind us what those projects are?
Hudson Heritage is the one across the street is the old psych center. And Doug and I walked that property with the contractor. And Bella Field is the project across from the Culinary. And I believe, Lynda, you went to the most recent meeting?
Yeah, sure. So Ellie and I went to a Hyde Park Chamber breakfast, and there was somebody there from Bella Field. They haven't gone to the planning board yet. They have a tractor out front and a sign. But they do plan to have a hotel and restaurants and shops and a conference center. That's phase one. And phase two would be residential. There's no timeline for that yet.
I believe the residential was upscale, too. For not, you know, for young families with, you know, growing kids. It was more for established people that would have, like, they had condominiums and separate houses. But there were, from what I heard, it looked like it was like a, not a senior citizens community, but it was certainly an established, you know, not, you know...
Yeah. The presentation that Doug and I went to, it really looked like they were attracting New York City people potentially second home. You could hop on the train, have a place to stay. And the Bella Field has a whole plan where you could go literally from the train station to the walkway, up to Bella Field, and, you know, never even have to get in a car from the train station. You'd have to be in pretty good physical condition because whether you have a bike or you're walking it, it's still a distance. But they're pretty impressive plans. So, and it's all really geared around the increase of tourism.
Okay. This is, this was the Bella Field. So this wasn't across from the Culinary. This is right next to Marist College on the riverfront, right?
But there's two of them.
Go ahead, Lynda.
Bella Field is across from the Culinary.
Hudson Heritage.
Okay.
West Dorsey.
So it's close to Marist?
I think, Jeff, you're referring to the Bella Field District, right? Which is off of the CIA and up towards, down the river and up towards the... That would be Stop &amp; Shop, right?
Yeah, I think they...
That area back there.
I think they own that riverfront, but they're not planning that property in there. But my understanding, and Lynda went to the most recent one, was somehow they weren't developing on the river. The plan is across the street on the east side of Route 9.
Yeah, it's the wooded area across the street from the Culinary Institute.
But the town of Hyde Park does have a Bella Field District, which is different.
I didn't know that.
Which makes it confusing, yeah.
Are you questioning the...
So there are three, there's three building projects then, right? There's one that's by Marist College
Correct.
near the boathouse. And that development will cross the city of Poughkeepsie and in the Hyde Park School and the town of Poughkeepsie. Then there's the psych center. And then there's the land across from our Culinary.
Okay. And we have not had any update on the one that you're referring to down by the river. But that would be another one to add to the list. Is that called Bella Field or Bella Field?
I don't know. I thought that was the Bella Field, but okay.
Yeah. Well, we'll put that on our list of ones to watch, that's for sure. So again, this is what was established previously. Any new committee would, you know, certainly look at everything. But one of the things that we value is not having support services delivered in closets. Definitely, smaller spaces is acceptable. And some of our newer schools have lots of smaller spaces for small group instruction. Some of the older schools don't. So again, you know, if a student's getting physical therapy, it's nice to not have them out in a hallway. We believe in appropriate space for music, art, and physical education. And then the classroom sizes that I shared with you on an earlier slide account for maintaining music, art, and phys ed spaces, not having any of that on the cart. So when I say we need 65 classrooms, that's in addition to the music room and the art room. I had happened to work in a school district where just prior to the Capitol Project, music was on a cart and art was on a cart. So this was something we visited prior to, when we closed one school. We said, "Okay, we'll close the school, but we don't want to close the school and make art on a cart and music on a cart." We firmly believe in libraries in every school and definitely some collaboration space for professional development, which each of our schools have, and we certainly have plenty of room here. And we've utilized Hyde Park Elementary auditorium for professional development. I'll just use this now as an opportunity to say that when we closed Hyde Park Elementary, our goal was to have the building occupied and in use so that it wouldn't go to disrepair. One of the things that was important to the committee and the community was that it wasn't some hodgepodge rented out, you know, rent an office space, not have any idea who was really in and out of there. All of the tenants in Hyde Park Elementary are in the human services industry. So we have an adult daycare. We have a young, a children's daycare. We have a dance studio. We still rent out, later on the agenda, there's the, we still rent out a space to the town for a senior citizen classroom. Thanks to the UPK grant, we have lots of wonderful little tiny children over there. About six classrooms worth of students in our UPK program that attend. And our pupil services still have offices up front. So the school district has a presence at the Hyde Park Elementary. Every available space is occupied, with the exception of the gymnasium and the auditorium. We utilize the auditorium for training, sometimes advanced placement exams. And as you'll see on the personnel agenda, we are going to reinstate the wrestling team, and we'll be utilizing the gymnasium at Hyde Park Elementary for winter wrestling. So, but all the other available space is in use and in use for things that we can be proud of as a school district. So it's important to know that all of the fears of what would happen to that building when we had to close it and we made some commitments about how attentive we would be to what we repurposed it for have been actualized. So kudos to the board and a lot of the people on the admin team for making that happen. Again, staying ahead of the curve, rumor control. We always wonder, the minute we say we're going to do an enrollment report, how fast the rumors are going to fly. Staying ahead of the economic forecast, the housing market, private and parochial enrollment. Homeschooling still is on the rise. Right now, we currently have 80 of our students on homes who are being homeschooled. It's a completely different world in homeschooling and a very viable option for many families. And of course, doing what's best for our students. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we should keep a watch on what the federal government is doing with education. We could probably add another box up there to say that we should watch the direction of the federal involvement in education and what direction that may take and what possible impact it could have on public schools. So just, next time you see me, I'll have a box added. So that's where we are. I know that last year, I added a few things. I reviewed the questions people asked last year and tried to address them in this. I know Steve asked, "Do we have a target?" And the target is, at the elementary level, needing four less classrooms. So if you can safely say that by consolidating, we'd probably pick up one classroom, because there is some wiggle room that Doug mentioned, we're safe to say we're down to three classrooms away. And three classrooms of children at, let's say, the max, were 90 students away. So if you wanted to put some sort of a number or target, that's what it's looking like. So I feel confident that, should the trend of even 47 students continue, that the year to do the study is 18, 19.
Clear? The last comment got me a little confused because it seems to assume that all the students we're losing are at the elementary level. You know, my understanding is we are losing population up and down. So of the 47 students, maybe 10 or 12 may be at the middle school or high school. So the progression rate that's going to reduce the students at the elementary level may not be as quick.
That's a very accurate way to look at it. The decline in students is across the board. The greater percentage of decline is happening at the elementary. So when you look at our enrollment reports, what we're finding is that the numbers at the high school are, as they... We're not losing as many at the high school. As the class goes through 9, 10, and 11, we lose what we typically would lose from some dropouts, and we're doing a better job there. But where you see the decline is, as you look at the elementary going into the middle school, the class size, the overall size of that graduating cohort is much smaller. So 90 isn't, you know, a magic number because it would be...
Well, actually...
It's a little wiggle room, but...
Except for one class in high school, they're all going progressively down. There's one bump.
Yep.
But after that, they...
They're all going, yeah.
I was going to ask, if you were to look at the population of each class, what does that graph look like? And I'm assuming that it's a somewhat steady decline with probably a few variations.
Yes.
So this past year, we graduated how many students?
273, I want to say. I have it written down. I want to say 273.
Versus, how many students will we have in first grade next year?
I should have brought that... Evva, can you pull up the enrollment, last enrollment? So what's the entering, what's the first grade class size right now?
The current first grade, oh, the class size part. Current first grade class size...
233.
Oh, okay. There's a separate thing that has the average class size of 22 and 1/2?
No, there should be a box that says "Total Number of First Graders," all the way to the...
Yep. So, let's see. Current K, 222, first grade, 224. 215, 24, 239, 242.
There's been a 50, 50 child difference in the class sizes for the last seven or eight years as it goes up. There's 50 less, 50 less in each, each class as you go down.
And then sixth grade, 266, seventh, 289, eighth, 294.
Another thing to look at is, we call schools two-deep, three-deep, four-deep, five-deep. And by deep, we mean if a school is four-deep, that means pretty much at every grade level, K1, 2, 3, 4, you have four sections. So it's four-deep. And one of the indicators that we look at is it's very expensive to operate a two-deep school if you have room. So what happened at Hyde Park Elementary was for quite a few years, we maintained a two-deep school, even though according to our contract, it was basically a one-deep school, meaning that we had several grade levels where if we combined the classes, we would have less than 30 students. So to pay the overhead, and again, it's not the teachers. You only reduce the number of teachers by a very, by very few. You still have the same number of students. But if you maintain class size at our average of anywhere from 24 to 28, instead of having classes of 12 and 13, which had happened for a while, not by design, but because you don't want to close an elementary school, it just becomes fiscally burdensome on the community. So one of the really sad things now is going into next year, we are looking at two of our elementary schools that are true two-deep at every grade level, meaning there's two sections, K1, 2, 3, 4. And that's the first time we have had two of our elementary schools at two-deep since the closing of Hyde Park Elementary.
And I'll add that beyond those two, one only has one with three-section, otherwise all two.
Right.
And North Park is all three-section, except for one of four. But that is... And North Park is all three section except for one of four, but that is moving up.
The last bubble, yeah.
And when that bubble moves up, there'll be a three-section school. So it's, we're looking at all two and one-three where at one point we were all threes and a four.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers you read out, twenty-two, twenty-four, or two hundred and twenty-two, two twenty-four, two fifteen, two twenty-four. I mean, those all...
Going up to two eighty-nine in twelfth grade, so that's the...
Right. So, but those lower numbers clearly mean that there's, if it's twenty-five students per, you're looking at nine sections throughout the district.
Yeah.
And if we've got four elementary schools, then, you know, you're either looking at smaller class sizes or, how do you say, too deep.
Yeah. And too deep, I mean, you know, so, so you're, you're maintaining a building, heating, plowing, electric, uh, principal, secretary, custodial, librarian, you know, you, you, you know, the, the costs are, again, typically not the classroom teacher. It's operating an entire school.
Do we, do we have numbers to quantify what the savings we had when we were closing Hyde Park?
Yeah, it was nine hundred thousand. We had thought it was going to be one million, but we really only got up to nine hundred thousand.
Per year?
Well, um, yes, because that was nine hundred thousand dollars' worth of operational cost and staff that we no longer needed, uh, pretty much ever again. I mean, we might've, whatever we gained back in, um, having some custodians at, uh, Hyde Park Elementary, we recouped with the rent we're receiving. And, and the rent also covers, uh, pretty much the, uh, electric and heating, not only for, uh, but for the tenants, but it, it helps offset, um, the office spaces we're using.
We, we, we make, we make more rent than we spend on that building right now.
Um, I, I would just like to ask a question about when we do the enrollment study. Um, I hope, or I don't know if it has to be a different study, but if we are gonna be, you know, examining the enrollment study with, with eyes of, do we wanna close a school? I hope at that point that we then look at redistricting. And I know that, I know, I know...
Big bad R-word, yeah.
I know, I know, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna fuel the rumor, I'm not doing that.
You, you cannot do another move in this district without redistricting.
Right.
The lines are so blurred and they don't make any sense and, um, it, it's impossible to do it with, yes. It, it, you have to, if we, if the district determines that they're going down that road and indeed, uh, moving to close an elementary school, you have to look at the, uh, you have to look at the lines. You have to look at the transportation costs, the, you know, there was, uh, I, I, I don't wanna misspeak whether it was, uh, pine planes or palling, but when they were looking at their enrollment and they were very tiny anyway, one of the things that they found with their transportation was, they were, they were driving past schools to get other kids to schools. I mean, it, it would be impossible to make another move without that.
Yeah, that was pine planes.
Was it pine planes?
Yeah, that's when my, my kids were there.
I just wanted to say that out loud, I just wanted to say that, I feel like we have to look at that.
I, I, I actually had it up there, uh, and, I don't know, maybe I took it out because we'll wait till we get there. But really, the, the honest answer is you can't, you can't, you can't touch this district again without looking at the, the boundary lines and what makes sense if you go any smaller.
Everything we saw here talked about elementary school capacity. What's the capacity numbers for the middle school and the high school?
I don't have them in front of me. And that was a topic that came up, um, and, and may continue to, uh, come up is, um, what do we do if we continue to see declining enrollment? And what are we doing with the extra space at the, the middle school and the high school? And as Doug mentioned, if somebody wanted to take that on to say fifth grade in the middle school, um, we could probably do that. Um, I haven't done this study. I think we took a peek at that in the last enrollment study. And if my recollection, uh, is, is working, um, it was feasible, not comfortable, but feasible.
You, you could think about five, seven, and eight, twelve.
Yep.
Because there is extra space at high school as well.
With this...
Not many people would like that.
Right. And, and seeing how close we are to, um, you know, again, if the trend continues and a committee is formed and a study is done and, and a decision is made to close a school, um, I'm not sure there'd be a lot of support to say, uh, it, it wouldn't mean keep a school open. Um, I don't think there'd be a lot of support to say, oh, let's, let's, uh, keep sixth grade down at the elementary or move, you know, to, to reconfigure grade levels. There's generally in a community, a lot less support for that. Um, not impossible. Uh, Kingston went from eleven elementary schools to six and they moved fifth grade to the middle school. And, uh, I worked in Kingston for five years. And if you think there's concerns here about moving fifth graders to the middle school, put, Kingston's a much tougher place to put your fifth grader on a, on a bus going to a middle school. But they've done it and it's been successful. Um, again, down the line, uh, uh, one of my thoughts of, have, for having the conversation now, um, is, you know, eventually, do we need a district office? Or could we do with a smaller district office? Or, um, could we move district office to, um, Havlin Middle School or FDR, which is not uncommon at all to have central offices located in a school building or attached to a school building. And, you know, if, if enrollment continues to decline and you look at economy and we have room in one of our other schools, uh, that's a possibility as well. And, you know, this is, this is quite the building. But that's way down the line.
Yeah, I have a question just about timeline. If you've, you know, have, have you looked at, or what, what is perceived to be the ideal timeline? So we start looking and we see where the, you know, you know, we've said that if we continue at the rate,
Yeah.
we're really only a couple of years away. To me, it seems like there's a whole lot of conversation to be had here. There's a, a study to be done and a lot of, eh, a lot to do. And, you know, is, should we be looking at starting something sooner? Um, and, and if not, why not?
Okay. I, I thought about that, um, and I, I thought about a couple of things on that. One is that, um, if, if we're only a couple of years away, um, the eighteen, nineteen year makes sense to do the study because we're not there for eighteen, nineteen. But if we're that close, do the study eighteen, nineteen. I can tell you, the people that did our enrollment study, if they looked at our enrollment and everything now, they would say, you, you're pretty much, in eighteen, nineteen, when that report comes out, it's going to validate, you know what, you could downsize. And you wanna do that in a specified amount of time. We're going to put the committee together in the fall. We're going to employ the enrollment study. And so as the committee's convening and conversing about what's important and the numbers start coming in and the consultant works with the committee, the recommendation is made at the end of that year. To take a community and say, we're gonna spend two years talking about this, won't get you any further faster. It'll just be longer and more painful. And at the end of the day, when we were sitting here trying to make a decision, um, it was excruciatingly painful and one of the, uh, and, and nobody sitting here wants to be the one to pull the trigger. And so one of the expressions that was actually used when we were in that position was, all right, well, it's time. The information is in front of us, we have to rip the Band-Aid off. And any community looking at downsizing a school district, it's painful. So you wanna stick to that prescribed timeline and say, this is the year we're gonna do it. I think this coming year is premature because I think there, there's two, it's too tight. For me, it's too tight and they may say, wait a year. So now, now you've convened the committee, uh, I don't know if you remember the children sitting here with numbers on their shirts.
Yep.
And knowing that human nature is to panic, to fight for schools. Nobody wants their schools closed. I, I'm not a proponent for spreading it out over two years.
Yeah. I, I, I can appreciate that. I'm just concerned about thinking about redistricting as being a part of it. And I guess I'd like...
The redistricting, oh, well, go ahead, sorry.
So I, I guess what I'd like to do is I'd like to see maybe just a timeline developed to say, this is the way that you'd think that it would happen. It just, it would be more comfortable for me anyway to be able to say, it makes sense, let's plan...
I have to agree with Perry.
Well, don't say it like it's a bad thing to do with me.
And Jeff, is it two o'clock in the morning for you now?
It's reverse Polish.
One thirty in the morning, yep.
Yeah. I can certainly do a timeline and, and I'll just reiterate that the, the, the redistricting becomes part of the study.
Yeah.
Um, in our last study, that, that was part of it, you know, um, uh, and there was a recommendation, um, at the end as to who goes where. So that does become, but I can, I can put together a timeline.
Yeah. I mean, I was here for that, that, you know, when the vote and, it, to me, it seemed like it could've been done a little bit better. Uh, you know, it was like a last minute that all of a sudden, North Park became the place that everybody was going and...
Well, I, I, I think you point, I think you point out a really good point that the timeline will help all of us, including the community, to say, if the report comes in on January, a decision will be made within sixty days. And the decision will be made by the board. And I think that would be helpful because, you know, closing an elementary school was a, is a relatively new phenomenon in New York State. So we were all in this, okay, so, you know, we, we go through it and then when it comes time to actually act on it, it seems like a shock or how do we do this or is this a vote? But I think if we have that timeline mapped out, uh, it alleviates the guesswork as to when we should make the decision. I think if I remember, there were some people who felt like they didn't wanna make the decision then or we should wait or, or whatever. I mean, there has to be some commitment that if you're going to have the study done and the numbers are here, that an action based on the study will occur.
It's what I refer to as managing expectations.
Exactly, exactly.
Everybody will come to know what to, you know, what, that there, there is a plan.
Mm-hmm.
And at the same time, we can start to look at if, you know, if, if we get a report in January and we say that we're gonna have a decision by whenever, then we can start looking at all the steps that are in between there and how do we, you know, what are those steps?
Yep.
So we can start with a broad schedule and then work with a more, uh, finite schedule and say, all right, what, how do we get to be able to pull the trigger at that, at that hour?
When, when we did the first one with Hyde Park, did, did we ever look at like a phased approach? Like if you, if we were to look at, you know, at the numbers now saying, geez, an elementary school's gonna, X, elementary school X is gonna close in five years. Well, do we say, well, let's not start any kindergarten classes in that school. Let's look at, in parallel, hey, what does redistricting look like? Where would those kindergartners go? Start in those schools and then phase out this one? So then, from a community perspective, nobody is really going to be upset because there are no, there's no people yanked out of their school. Would that look at?
Yeah, um, I don't have a pen up here and I wanna capture that. And I, 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 I wanna respond to that too. So, um, so as for a phased-in approach, what happened here in Hyde Park was, um, if it weren't for the economy, the handwriting was on the wall for quite a while. And, uh, we all learned a lot. We all learned what our policy was. We all learned that there's a policy to have a committee. We all learned that there's a policy to give this annual update. Um, enrollment should have been, and as per the policy, should have been something that was discussed every year. It shouldn't have been a surprise because by the time we closed Hyde Park Elementary, you know, when you talk to the consul, it was an absolute no-brainer. You know, you didn't even, the study was helpful in guiding a process, but number-wise, within the first five minutes of looking at our school district, you knew that we could close an elementary school. So what we were doing was reactionary to the economic time. The year before, we were looking at big layoffs, you know, what, what are we gonna cut? What programs are we gonna cut? How many teachers are we gonna cut, um, to respond to, uh, the distressed economy? So in a sense, um, we're being a little bit proactive in that we're talking about this every year. Um, but the phased-in approach is a possibility. Part of the study was, here's just to throw a cog in it. Um, part of the study, one of the things that came up in the study was which elementary school has the fastest decline rate? And at that time, Netherwood had the fastest rate of decline. And now this year, all of a sudden, we have fifty-nine kindergarteners attending Netherwood and we're watching the number like a hawk because if we get to the magic thirty, it's a new section. Violet Avenue, which could or could not go to a third section in kindergarten, is sitting there at thirty-three right now. So we're, yeah, thirty-three, unless there was an update this past week. So, um, but that is part of what we can look at. We can say, would, is there a school that's declining enrollment at a faster pace? Um, a phase-in approach, uh, I don't know. I think, I think that could take serious consideration. Um, it might be a very different way of looking at it because you, you would have to...
You would have to decide which school.
Which school, yeah. You'd have to decide which school, early.
Right, well, that's gonna have to be done anyway, right?
Right.
I mean, just start, start now, ease the pain from the community because kids aren't gonna be sitting here with numbers because they're in the school from kindergarten.
The kids will still be sitting here in numbers, yeah.
But nobody's getting kicked out of their school, right?
Right.
Right, so eventually you'd have two fifth grade classes in the building.
Start turning the lights off and it'd be a very small school, right?
Yeah.
That sounds like an incredibly complicated thing to do.
Yeah, absolutely, but if we wanna get...
I think the, the, the morale issue, um, if I'm sitting for two, three years in the designated school to close, it's hard for the staff to not fall apart. Um, it's hard for the community not to fall apart. It's, it's, it's human nature. Um, if, if, it's like being in one of those stores that's going out of business and it just, you know, you get less and less merchandise and nobody wants to go in there because it feels kinda creepy, you know? It's like, it's, you know, it's like, oh, we're the one, we're the one, you know?
Great analogy, that's...
I guess I was, I was, I like, I would like a timeline kind of penned out for me to further understand, you know, to better understand everything. Because when you said getting the enrollment study in January, you know, that just kinda panicked me because I was hoping that the committee would be able to begin to review or at least request or work with the, the company for the enrollment study much earlier than January when we're talking about making a decision within that year.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'll do the timeline, yeah. I just picked January out of my head, yeah.
Yeah, I would just really appreciate the timeline.
No, you know, you'd, you'd wanna, so let's say...
Is I've got a million questions in my head for the enrollment study?
I mean, basically, what, what you do is you, you hopefully get that committee together. So let's say if it's eighteen, you, you get the committee together in June so that they can meet a few times over the summer to review. The consultant is with them the whole way. It's, it, the consultant is with them, guiding the process the entire way and sharing the steps of the study, the numbers, the process... steps of the study, the numbers, the process. Because it's important for the people on that committee to see the process that's being used, the numbers. Nobody on, it shouldn't be a mystery to anybody on the committee what's, what we're looking at, what are the data points.
Okay, thank you. I just, I, I didn't have that clear picture and that's what I wanted, something Perry suggested.
Yeah, you, yeah, and so it's the whole year you're working with the consultant to, to the study. Oh, boy.
And I'm sorry again, I apologize, I'm not trying to alarm anybody, but-
No, it, it's important work and, and, you know, it, it's less scary than I thought. You know, we looked at three years in a row with an average of 97 students. I was just happy to see it slow down. And I think one of the things that, you know, I hope we do in the next time is that it seems to be cyclical. We just had a big workshop over at Statsburg Elementary today. And you know what, if anything this district has learned from history was we closed Statsburg Elementary School. It went into disrespare, disrepair. I used to have the number on the top of my head a couple of years ago about how much it costs the district to add classrooms on to Hyde Park Elementary. We added in addition onto Hyde Park Elementary because we let an elementary school close. It went into disrepair. There seems to be a 10-year ebb and flow. One of the reasons for maintaining, the importance of maintaining Hyde Park Elementary is if that pendulum swung again, we wouldn't have to pay money to reopen a school or, or, God forbid, add new classrooms on to an existing school because we had one in disrepair. And I think looking at every piece of that history, also looking at how frighteningly close the district got to adding on to the high school in, what year was that?
98.
Yeah. And, and look at what happened in Arlington where they built that massive high school and now had to, they've closed an elementary school and a whole middle school. So I think part of the committee's work is to look at long-term, short-term, what-ifs because there's, there's just a lot to consider.
Well, I think somebody should state, and I'm going to give it a shot, that for those people who are going to watch this on the video, that we're, we're not proposing to close a school. We are, however, proposing to do the groundwork to decide what the eventual outcome for the district will be in the future, starting in 18, 19. That, you know, I, people tend to get the, you know, they hear closing a school and then they automatically say, they're closing my school.
Yeah.
And then they get it back. We're not saying that, but we are saying that it is a serious discussion because the numbers are declining. And so I think this is a good discussion to get things going and hopefully people will understand that this is a long-range problem.
Yeah. Very good.
Okay, wow. I didn't expect this to go like this, but it was very useful, very, very good, yeah. I thought we just, see the numbers and, oh, okay, okay. Well, we had some very good discussion, I thought some very good questions.
I think it's important to do it annually.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, at this time, may I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Would anybody in the audience there like to? Come on, Steve, I said you had to get, you're not, nobody wants to comment on the superintendent's contract in Poughkeepsie? Oh, okay, sorry.
Those are the words we know.
Maybe a low blow, but, okay. May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So move.
Second.
And discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Okay, I asked Jay to put this one on because I received a letter from this gentleman. When I read it, I thought, why not? You know, if he wants, he's got a lot of experience and he wants to do the job, the Area 9 representative. I would be in favor of giving him a helping hand. I don't know, but anybody else have any comment on it?
Does anybody know him? Does anybody know him other than what he's put in this letter? Anybody Google it even to see if it's factual?
I did not.
Fake news.
Yeah, I, I would not be in favor of making the nomination. I, I mean, I'm great, I'm, I'm glad to see somebody willing to do it, but the fact that I, I mean, I personally haven't done anything to, to be able to validate anything that's here and-
Okay, well, that's why I put it on.
Yeah, I mean, that would be my opinion. It would be the fact that we don't know anything about it and we don't even know if this is It would seem like a rather weak system that-
Would anybody purposely say they've been on a board for 17 years?
You know what, stranger things have happened. People have represented themselves in much different ways and I just, that's my opinion. If anybody, you know, if I feel stronger, I'd-
Well, I didn't, I don't recall what the timeline was, but is there any thoughts that if we do look at them up and see on a future meeting?
Can you explain a little bit what this is?
The Area 9, so the New York School Board Association has districts. We're in District 9. And each district has a leader ahead of it. And he is proposing himself to fulfill a soon-to-be vacant position.
I guess I'd want to see who else was running. I guess I'd want to see who-
Yeah, we don't know, yeah.
Who is the current Area 9 representative?
The ladies.
It's not Mary Matheny, is it?
No, no, not anymore.
I'm trying to think, yeah, and then, and is she not running again?
Evidently, yeah. I don't know, I don't know. So we, how about if, except I'm going away for a week?
When's the nomination due?
Let me look, I didn't look at, it's pretty soon, isn't it? With the Board of Directors' position for Area 9, it does not say. Even the letter doesn't say, does it? I'd have to find out. Okay, let's just put it this way, let's, we will do some research. I'll, it'll have to be when I get back for them going away tomorrow.
Dorothy Slattery? Slattery, is that Dorothy Slattery?
Could be.
Yeah.
It could be, he's the only one running.
Yeah. Well, we can ta, we can just have a discussion at the next meeting and if it's already done, then we don't have to, we can do some research and how about if we do that? Next meeting is in August, they probably, this is probably not something that gets done right away. I don't know.
And do we have to?
We can ask Jay to reach out to New York State School Boards and, you know, find out what the timeline is and-
Are we obligated to nominate somebody or?
No.
No, 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 we don't have to, no. We could nominate you if we wanted, you know.
Well, you think you get a choice?
Okay. Oh, Jay will do that.
I got it.
You are such a lucky girl. Aren't you?
Thanks, Jay.
She's got a direct line to that New York State School Board, so.
The, I'm not even sure, you know, Perry, you got me thinking now. I'm not even sure what kind of decisions the Director of Area 9 makes on behalf of us, come to think of it. I know we get a newsletter. And I guess it must represent us on a Board of Directors who make overall decisions for the New York School Boards Association, but I don't know what kind of, that's a good question. You know, I'm, I'm always, you know, like, oh, you want to do it? Go ahead, you know, so, but.
Could be another-
We'll, we'll do that, we'll revisit it at the next meeting. And if we find out that it'll, next meeting is past due, then because we haven't got enough information, we just don't, won't do anything.
Maybe, maybe at some point in the future, we, they should invite New York School Board Association rep to come in and better communicate what value they bring-
Better idea.
And can offer.
Yep. That's why you're on the board, Perry.
I mean, we've used them for training. I mean, I, you know, I thought that the training we had was, was good.
Excellent, excellent.
But.
Okay. So we have a motion for 1402. The, oh, this is board discussion. This is a refunding presentation. Linda, you got more information on that now that the 10-year bond issue has gone up another 10 points?
So I, I did ask Jason from Bernie Donegan's office to put together a presentation. He did give me some slides. I'm not sure if we want to look at all of them, but I have some information, too. So, and we did, I did ask for this to be on the board discussion in case you wanted to talk about it. So at the last meeting, I had asked the board if they would want us to move forward with refunding bonds. There are four bonds that we could refund at this time and that they're listed up here.
Linda?
Yes.
When you use the word refund?
Yes.
It's the form of the word that's similar to refinancing, right?
Yes, it's similar to refinance. It is a little different, so I'll, I'll talk about that, too.
Okay, but-
But thank, yes, it's refinancing.
Many people would look at that and think, oh, they're giving money back.
No.
Right.
So this slide is a little hard to see, so I'm glad I printed it out. But here, it shows what the potential savings could be if we move forward with the refunding today. We also have a timeline, so if the board is agreeable to this, Bernie Donegan's office will start the paperwork tomorrow. And we could expect by mid-August to have an actual interest rate. It would be August 17th. And that's really the date that we would decide if we were moving forward. So they would recalculate everything and let us know if, in their opinion, it was worth it or not. But everything listed on here on the right side is the actual budget savings over the next 10 years, or I should say the estimated savings. So we could save $190,000 and that's inclusive of the charges that we would have to pay to Bernie Donegan's office and to our bond counsel, that's Barclay Damon. And it's also inclusive of the negative arbitrage. And I think that's where we had perhaps some little confusion. I don't think I explained it quite right the last time, so that's what I gathered more information on. Our net present value of the savings is listed at the top, so that's today's, like the value of that savings in today's dollars, that's $179,000. So the reason that bond refunding is not a true refinancing is that we can't, we can't call back all of the bonds until their call dates, until they're callable. So we have four bonds that we're looking to refund, but their call dates are in the future. So two of the bonds are not callable until the end of 2018 or the 17, 18 school year. Another one is callable at the end of 2019 and the fourth one is callable at the end of 2020. So that means, excuse me, if we were to find a lender to refinance these bonds for us at a lower interest rate, they would have to hold the money for us in an escrow account to make the payments on those, on that debt until the call date. So the negative arbitrage is the difference between what we would be earning in interest in an account, in an investment, and what we would be paying for the debt. So when the, when Bernie Donegan's office considers if it's time to consider refunding, they look at the date of the bonds and when they are callable, the current interest rates for financing, they look at the 10-year treasury rates and they also look at the savings rates. And that's why they didn't consider this last year because three of the bonds were, the three smallest bonds wouldn't be enough to entice a lender to, to lend us money at that time because of the length of arbitrage. So I hope that makes sense. This slide here is just an estimate if the interest rates were to go up between now and August 17th. They assumed a change by 25 basis points, that's a quarter of a percent. If that were the case, we could still save $108,000 over the next 10 years or the present value is $103,000. And again, that's near the top of the screen. I don't know if everybody can see that. So that's really, this is like the worst-case scenario. And if we were to move forward with this, we do have a schedule here. Everything, the, two things here that are yellow highlighted have already happened. In December, the board resolved to approve the refund, the refunding. The district clerk actually issued the, or notice of estoppel in the newspaper. And then the, the line that has the arrow next to it, that's today's date. So that's the board discussing it. The next important date is really August 17th because that's when we would find out if the bond interest rates were still good enough to move forward. And Bernie Donegan's office would call me and we would decide at that time if we would move forward. And Jason did, did put together some slides about what they consider when they propose a refunding, refunding to any school district. So he did mention the negative arbitrage. He said that one of our biggest issues is, is the one big bond that we had, which is over $6 million, wasn't eligible for refunding prior to this year. And that the other three bonds are too small for any lender to make an offer to us because of the, the risk of the arbitrage. And he has-
Anybody got any questions?
Hi, we've already voted to approve this, right?
Yes, we did.
Because we're not going to meet before August 18th now.
Yeah, oh, yeah. So, so the vote happened in December.
Right.
I think I turned it off. So the vote happened in December. We did at that time, though, commit to bringing it back here when the, when, when the interest rates were favorable. I don't know if you remember, in the fall, we wanted to move forward, but after the election, the interest rates were rising at that time, so it seemed too risky. And we do have to get the state comptroller to approve the refunding, too. But according to Bernie Donegan's office, they're required to approve it if we can show that we'll save at least a dollar. So they don't think that'll be an issue. Are there any other questions? And-
Well, I, I, just a comment, at this point, because it looks like it's been a steady incline that we should get what we can get. I mean, it's, uh-
Yeah, I agree.
Better than paying what we're paying. I mean, you're still saving $100,000, even in worst-case scenario, save $100,000 is $100,000, so.
And there is a, the contract with Bernie Donegan's office is on the agenda later on, so we added that. So even though you're not voting on the actual refunding, if you don't approve that contract, then we won't move forward, but if you do-
Okay.
And, and these numbers are net of all expenses?
Yes, yes. It includes the cost for Bernie Donegan's office and the cost for the, for Barclay Damon.
Okay.
It includes the cost we already incurred, too. We had a cost for the notice of estoppel.
The original, yep.
Okay, thank, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Always fun to talk about bond anticipation.
I like the negative arbitrage, it just sounds important.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Board Subcommittee Reports. We did have an Audit Committee meeting where we met with the external auditors and they will be here the end of this month, right?
July 24th.
July 24th.
They're here for the whole week.
Right, right, in a week. Okay, I guess, gets us to unfinished business, the therapy dog proposal. I don't think you're looking for a vote on this, you're just, we're just continuing-
Continue conversation. And I, I know that Deanna Sperrenaviva provided more information.
Yeah, provided-
Yeah, provided, like, a sample policy and also a sample agreement. And then Deanna's here, too, and, you know, I've been reaching out to districts that have programs, and they haven't gotten back to us yet, but that's nitty-gritty and not, you know, for, we don't need that information right away.
I think, as I said at the last meeting, I'm not opposed to this. I just want to understand who's paying the money and whether or not we're allowed to use public funds. As I was thinking about it, what, is there any difference between this and hiring somebody?
Professional service.
Professional services. So, I, maybe.
Well, and I was reading it, and what's interesting is.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to do something wrong, that's all.
Well, and I would look to Linda to steer us in that. I mean, it's, what, what's interesting here is, you read all this, you're not buying a dog. You're, you're paying for a service to train people and.
Well, you're a dog. You're paying ten thousand dollars for the dog.
Nowhere in here does it say that you're buying a dog. It, it doesn't, it doesn't refer to the purchase of the dog. It speaks to the, the training.
Somebody, somebody is acquiring the dog.
I know, but that's my interest, that's the interesting point of this, is the way that it's written, it doesn't, it doesn't refer to you buying a dog. It talks about training.
We're not, right. And, and after going through our own legal counsel and NYSER, and our insurer, and other districts who have done it, and the organization, really, it is where an individual person, staff member chooses to own the dog and take full responsibility for the dog. What the district does is they have a contract for the training of the dog and the personnel, and any other costs, you know, there could be fundraising, but it is outside the school district. The only thing the district buys is this one contract for the training that is with the dog and the, and the handlers, for lack of a better term, and that's it. And then the dog, you know, the, has, the average is about eight years of service, but there's no guarantee of that, and it could be longer, and in, in cases that Dr. Crenshaw was saying could be ten years.
Yep.
And if it's successful, districts certainly have had more than one dog in one building or, or had additional dogs, you know, and that, this would be really dependent on individuals who want to do that.
Yeah. I think it would be, to me, it'd be really valuable, and it may be what Doug is looking at as well. It'd be interesting to see what other districts or other, other public agencies, how they're approaching or what they're seeing this expense as being, because it's, you know, we all struggle with the procurement process of everything we buy, you know, multiple quotes, state contract, whatnot. You really, if you look at this as a professional service, it becomes much easier in that way because you're not, it's not an asset, you're not purchasing an asset.
Right. So, locally, I mean, there is the children's home, and that was the, the presentation of people who've had really good experience with this organization locally, with some really good outcomes, and certainly, you know, research that Dr. Crenshaw has conducted and articles, and, you know, so we've seen that. And then Palmyra has a very successful program for several years, and I have the contact there, and, you know, put her in touch with Deanna, she just hasn't, you know, it's summer, and she hasn't gotten back to us yet, but, and Gilderland also has a similar policy.
I'm a much easier sell on the value of it. I, I, I'm, actually, I'm sold on the value. Bring it up, and then let's vote on it, I'm good on the value of it. What I, what I would just like to hear is the rationale of how do you get to spending ten thousand dollars' worth of public funds for this? How do they, how do they approach that, or what are they calling it to do that?
You know, the website of Palmyra goes into the, the history of the program. For us, we're being pretty specific about, not only is it great for the overall culture and climate, but we are supporting kids who have experienced a great amount of trauma. So, you know, although we have special people like Deanna Gonzalez at the building who want to take this on, we do have a special population at Violet Avenue. So, it, it's not unlike, and, and here for its third year in the contract is the work with Andra Center and the Sanctuary Training. You know, we, you know, and, and again, the financial piece, when Greer was talking about bringing kids back to district and supporting kids in district, some of it is specialized training, therapeutic crisis intervention trainers, sending people to Cornell, bringing in, you know, Beatrice Vitas to do sanctuary work, like, we are using, whether it's, and some of this work comes out of, like, the School Psychologists Association, who says best practices, if you're going to support kids, is to bring in these programs, this, this training. So, everything that we've brought in is really evidence-based and to support special populations because the alternative is to not be successful and send them out and pay a lot more. So, that's the, that's the financial, to me, the rationale, but it would be great for any school, and we spend a lot more, again, sending kids out who don't find a connection, or, you know, as much as loving adults are trying very hard to make that happen, there's something special about an animal.
Yeah. I mean, maybe the other side of it is asking what are auditors, how they would look at it, and what their review of it would be.
Yeah. I haven't talked to the auditors yet. I will when they're here, but my take on it is that we are purchasing the service, and we are not required to bid out for a professional service. Our board policy does state any professional service that's more than thirty-five thousand, that we would issue a request for a proposal.
I think the, one unanswered question is, is.
I would like a legal.
Triple check, whether or not a dog is a professional service. I think that's the question on the table, not the financial value or how we finance it, but.
I think a dog is the tool, and you're training.
We're, yeah, we're paying for the training.
Use a computer or a dog.
Right. I think they just want a legal opinion on it.
I think my concern would be more, since it isn't a district-owned tool, resource, we're at the whim of, you know.
Deanna's staying with us.
Right, so, so, you know, two months after training, where we spend ten thousand dollars, I don't want to do this anymore, right? Since it isn't district-owned, we're, we're at the mercy of, of somebody else, right? That would be, there's no contract, right? There's no contract that we would have with.
With Deanna, yeah.
And that was exactly my question. What if after two years, you know, you've taken on this dog, and you've taken this dog into your home, and you're caring for it clearly, you decide to leave the district? How, how does that affect us now? We've.
We get the dog, we sign the contract.
But we don't, because.
Well, I mean, the dog would be the least of my worries if Deanna trusted me.
Well, no, no, I completely agree. But, yeah, but we don't.
Please.
Right, but we don't own the dog.
Right.
That we paid for the training.
No, and, and we pay for training for individuals that choose to move all the time.
Yeah.
We, we train people to do the job that they're hired to do, and, and we don't hold people to stay. And that happens all the time, and that's, that's part of the.
What's worse?
How it works.
Training someone who leaves or not training someone who stays?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah, we spend a lot of money sending people to Cornell for TCI, and we don't hold them.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I'm the Avid District Director. That was a fifteen thousand dollar expense the district made to train me to be able to run Avid, and I'm still here, but I didn't sign an agreement.
I don't have any intentions of.
Yeah.
Talk about her like she's not in the room.
What, what budget item, what, what, what budget code would this fit in?
Special ed contractual.
Yep, exactly.
Sorry.
Okay, we'll do it.
All right, just, yeah, get us.
Triple check.
Legal opinion, and.
So, the legal opinion is, is this a training service, like, what, what category is this in terms of the contract, right?
And, and, yeah, and do dogs count? Okay.
You know, is what if somebody wants a monkey?
Oh, I, I, okay, so there's a list of things.
There would have to be a lot of.
I would assume that if a lot of New York State districts have done this, then it's got to be a gym. You've just got to figure out the right coach to use, right?
You would think that.
Wow.
So, should this be considered under those constraints? I would like to see who's doing all this, this list of ten things in the section two duties and responsibilities, like.
That's all.
Who are the three staff members? You know, what's the plan for doing seven through nine?
And just in the interest of time, you know, there's another board meeting in August, I could certainly get you the legal answer. Deanna came specifically to answer some of those questions, because we do know who the backup, who the other people are already. So, if you're all right with having that discussion, she's here.
Sure.
Do you want me to answer? So, as far as the training for staff members, we actually have more staff members than the three who have volunteered to participate. So, Elna Sanford, who was here at the last board meeting on the twenty-second of June, she has been, you know, in this with me from the beginning and helping to investigate this. She went with me to meet with Dr. Crenshaw, so she's very invested in the program. So, she has asked to be a handler. Donna Lown, who is our reading teacher at Violet Avenue, who has also volunteered, Suzanne Gill has volunteered, she's a fourth-grade teacher who's been with the district for a long time, and that's just a few. So, so we definitely have enough people to go to the training and are willing to go to the training, and are, you know, willing to avail themselves to that opportunity and to help out if, you know, I were on vacay, if for some reason I couldn't care for the dog for a period of time, that they would be willing to step up so that we could take mutual responsibility for that.
I, I guess I would like to know what the minimum number is, since it's cost seven hundred and fifty bucks for anybody over three each.
Yeah, so I, I believe the, the plan would be to send three trainers for the program, unless we were to decide we wanted more backup. You know, that's what I've shared with staff is, we'd be sending three.
And to make the same connection to how we implemented the therapeutic crisis intervention for schools is that we trained one person at high school, one at middle, one at elementary, one person's on leave, one person has left the district, so we're training backups at each level. So, you know, it.
Could be something that we phase in later on.
Exactly, and much lower cost because the contract is, is a one-time.
Yes. Is there something, I don't have it in front of me, I did look at it prior to coming electronically, but I didn't print it. So, if there's another item on there that you think I could be helpful in answering, I'd be happy to.
Well, this recertification, uh.
The dog and handlers.
Person, which is not a lot of money.
Minimal. I mean, I could even take care of it, you know, if I needed to, and it was allowable through our school budget for that, through our PD line, I would be happy to budget that appropriately so that we could recertify each year as part of our professional development. But the dog does have to recertify every year that it has all of its skills and commands and can do its job, and we would also have to prove there's a test that we need to go through to be recertified, and the dog carries certification, we carry certification, every twelve months it has to be recertified.
And I'll say similar to.
TCIS, again. I need to do the same thing for.
Every year, all the certified teachers, teaching assistants, and staff who have been trained need to spend one day on recertification review training to keep up their certification, and all our, our behavior teaching assistants have to maintain that, to maintain their title, and, you know, so we're talking about the trainers, but also the participants, so.
Yes, correct.
That's standard.
I would also like to know where the, the animal would be kept in the school, what the, there's all these rules about exercise and areas for potty, you know, or whatever you want to call it. I'd like to see a plan for that as well.
Yeah. Yes, we would have designated areas similar to the way the children's home does, so that if there are any children who were not allowed to interact with the animal for any reason, whether, you know, they're not being comfortable with that or because of an allergy, that they would not be, you know, in direct contact with the animal. We haven't, because we don't even know if it's approved yet, we haven't gone through to start writing policy about where that would be. Definitely an area, I would imagine, in the office area. Our conversation with Dr. Crenshaw also is in the counseling office for children who may be having conversations, you know, with the counselor, that the dog may be beneficial in facilitating that counseling session. But we would also talk about other areas, and when it's good to bring the dog in, and when it's not good to bring the dog in, and Dr. Crenshaw has offered to work with us to help develop that a little bit more. But I can definitely put something together if, if some kind of draft of what I'm thinking and kind of thinking through that for August, I'd be happy to put together some kind of draft with original thinking and then collect your input on, on what you think is, as far as what we come up with.
I think that'd be good. There's fifteen items listed under the facility shell.
Okay.
And I think that, those are things that, that fall on our laps to satisfy.
I'm, I'm a little confused, I guess, how a nurse can do her nursing job and still maintain a coverage on a dog.
Right, and I, I don't imagine that she would have, she would provide intervention services with a dog during the school day unless there was something going on in the nurse's office where that might be beneficial. She's more offered to help with the care of the dog. If I were on vacation on a cruise and I couldn't bring the dog with me, you, she would offer to, to take care of the dog, or if there was a particular weekend, so it was more sort of day-to-day care.
Exercise before and after school.
Exercise before and after school, socialization opportunities.
I'm thinking of the school day where Johnny falls on the playground, skinned his knee, he needs a Band-Aid, but he's allergic to dogs, or.
Right. I can't imagine that Elna would have the dog in that instance. She wouldn't have him all day, him or her, all day long interacting for medical situations, no. I, I would see the dog more interacting with children who may be having a difficult time in, in their classroom.
Yeah, I, I envision the dog handler being in close proximity of the dog during the school day.
Yes.
And I don't see how you can do that and be a nurse at the same time. I just, doesn't seem like it's going to work.
Yeah, I think, I mean, and I, I think about this as well, is that where, you know, think about how the dog is going to be used, who is it that's going to be working with the dog? Who is the ideal candidate? You know, so we're going to train three people to be the handler of this dog. What are their credentials, meaning what are their job functions, what are their daily activities? How are they going, you know, are they, I mean, you know, ideally, you know, if you were a school psychologist, for instance.
Yes.
You might be the ideal person for the dog, to be a handler of the dog. I mean, that just, as an example in my mind, you know, limited understanding of it, but I think to, to, you know, it's like saying, you, somebody who in the cafeteria volunteered to be a dog handler, well, that's a great idea if they're really, you know, committed, but on the other hand, is it appropriate to think that they're going to be handling a dog if they work in a cafeteria in food services? So, I mean, that's just kind of a, an extreme example, I think, but, so I think, think that through for us.
Yeah.
Tell us, tell us who the.
So, you want to know, like, a day in the dog's life at Violet Avenue.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
A little bit like that, like, when, where are the places where it is? Does a handler need to be interacting with it all the time? And I, I know that that's not, that's not the case. People are still able to do their jobs, so it's not like someone's playing with the dog all day, but sort of like, what does it look like?
So, so, I mean, a, a simple question, is there always a handler with the dog, one of the train handlers with the dog when the dog is interacting with children?
Yeah, I can say at the children's home that that is not the case. When we went to visit with Ace, Ace was in Dr. Crenshaw's office. Ace had been in there for the afternoon for his counseling sessions, and the handler came to pick the dog up at the end of the day.
Okay.
To bring the dog home, but the dog was located in Dr. Crenshaw's office, he had a bed.
And he's not a handler? He is not one of the trains?
And he is not a handler.
Okay.
No.
All right, so that's helpful.
That helps, right.
You know, because I'm envisioning, we've got three people to the train, the dog's got to be with one of those three people all the time?
It's like when we bring animals into school, the person is with it the whole time, talking about it, holding it. It's not like that, like, it would, it would be at work.
Right.
Okay.
And would be an accessible tool to the larger mass of the building.
Right.
My role as a handler would be to maintain the training, to make sure that the dog has the exercise that it needs, that it has the socialization that it needs outside of school. There's a certain requirement to bring it to public places, make sure that it stays up on its skills, attend the training, that kind of thing, to sort of.
Not that there's a handler with it every minute of the day.
Correct.
That's clarity.
And because of its amazing training, like, it is, if it's not being utilized, it's sitting there, being, sitting like a perfect dog.
He will wait until it's time to go to work.
It's just sitting on a pillow in its designated space, hanging out, waiting to be needed. It's not requiring anything.
Is it, is it out of the question or not appropriate that you have a community meet? Is it, is it out of the question or not appropriate that you have a community meeting of your school parents to discuss, have an open meeting so that they know this is coming and?
I would love to do that.
Certainly, the people who tend to attend those are the ones that have the most questions or have objections that you might want to beat out in the open and, and answer.
Yeah. I would be happy to do that.
That would be the fun part. We just don't want to get anyone's hopes up until we know what's happening.
I might hold off on that until you get.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I mean, but.
I mean, I've talked about it.
I mean, before we go ahead completely, I would like to know that the school community is in favor of it.
Yep.
Yes. And I have talked about it a little bit in opportunities I've had with families, even, even here in mixed family opportunities, but have had this conversation with the PTA and with my PTA board, and they're very much in favor. Thought this was a great and innovative idea that would really benefit kids and something that our families would embrace. Now, that was just my executive board of PTA in those last, you know, just to let them know that I would be presenting at the board meeting and this is something I'd be mentioning so that they were aware I'd be having this conversation. But I haven't yet and would welcome the opportunity to have that conversation with the greater community.
Okay.
And from a timeline, was it, did I remember hearing correctly that if we said yes today, we wouldn't be able to really do this for two years, like get a dog into school?
It, it, there's quite a demand and there's only so many dogs. And they have to make sure that the right dog is matched with the right facility. And so the representative from ECAD would come to Violet Avenue, would talk with me, would see the building, would see the facility. We would discuss what our needs and goals would be for the program. And then he would look for the right match for us. And so he would have to find the right dog match for us. There's a $500 deposit that's required to get in line to do that work. So until there is a $500 deposit, we're not officially in line while we're, while we're talking and thinking about the program.
That timeline is two years even being in line or is it two years?
It could be, when we were accepted, when I put in the application to even see if you would consider our, our district and my school as, as the facility, when we were approved, that was approximately October when we started having this conversation. And he told me that it would probably be this summer or Christmas of the coming year, and that was in October. So I would say a safe bet is about a year out from whenever we put in that deposit and sort of get in line.
To get the dog or to get it into school?
To have a dog that's matched with us and for us to be able to go to do the training. So it's about a year from the time we would, we would put the deposit down.
Could be next summer to start fall of 2018 at the earliest.
Correct.
So there'd be a whole year of the community working and getting input and making decisions and all of that.
Right, we could start all of that awareness stuff and policy building and procedure building in, with the staff.
All next year, yeah.
Mm-hmm. He did say there was a possibility if there was a dog that may not be able to get soda out of the refrigerator or help to dress somebody because they do have very advanced skills. And maybe they wouldn't be a best fit for a disabled veteran or someone who's very disabled, but was really good at sort of comfort care and being there and those kinds of commands that it might be a better fit for a school setting. But they do train dogs for more severe disabilities as well. So he said it may be a dog that isn't a great candidate for a more severely disabled person, but would be a great fit for us as a school. So that could push us up in the, the line a little bit.
A lassie light.
Right.
Yeah. And, you know, my, my interaction with ECAD, they are meticulous and extremely serious about what they do. And I like to have people like that overseeing what we do. They will not let us.
No.
Have a dog if we're not ready and we don't do it right.
Or if we're not following guidelines.
And they couldn't be more serious. In fact, whatever the language was that Gilda Wind used, it wasn't the right way to talk about the therapy dog. And I was like chastised. I was like, ah, ah.
A serious correction email.
Right, right. Yeah.
So I guess that brings me to, at what point will the board feel confident of putting $500 down on, and get us on this list? Is it after we've gotten legal assurance that we can count it as a service? And if so, then we're in favor of it? I just, I.
I think I see a couple of things. I think, and they, and they can be happening simultaneously. Let's, I'd like to see legal counsel. I'd like to hear, you know, how that is. And then I'd like to see that, and I closed it, but there was a 15 items there and, and a day in the life type of thing. I think, to me, that would go a long way toward moving this in the right direction.
So if we could get some of that done before the next board meeting?
Absolutely.
Then perhaps we could, we could move on.
Yep.
Okay.
And to be clear, I've already had a legal opinion about going forward and protecting the district. That was okay. The question really is more about the financial.
Perpetual.
What is this? So it's a slightly different legal question.
Yeah, we don't want to get dinged by the auditors once we've done this.
Yeah, I can check with both. I can check with the auditors and with legal counsel.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Deanna.
Deanna.
I know you're excited and this is, this is going to be a long time to keep being excited. I mean, over a.
Oh, she can do it.
Doug, you're going to have to start carrying treats in your pocket when you go to.
When you go to read.
Oh, that's right. They'll have to be shaped by little books.
Just to get the dog to play with you.
Doggy books.
Well, someone's going to be baking though.
I can make them myself. Have you ever made dog biscuits? No, I have. Don't ask me why, but I have. Their heart. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion for the regular business meeting consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
I, I. Go ahead, Jeff.
I got a question on six, 16.11.
That was what I was going to explain.
We had talked about the concession manager. I thought we were going to get a comeback on, last year when we put that in on how much the role was and was the cost the right amount. I don't want to hold it up this year, but I think we should have some kind of review for that next year.
I'm sorry, Jeff, what were the questions?
On the concession manager on the personnel matters section. We had thought we had, that we were having a comeback this year, that we're, we're going to reevaluate and have what the role and how much responsibility it was.
Appropriate.
And that was the right amount.
Right.
Okay. So the role, the role.
I won't hold it up this year, but I think next year we should have some kind of comeback on that.
Okay. The role and does it match the stipend amount?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. I did, just as a point of information, I did meet with Doug and we reviewed this year. We're going to have a follow-up meeting with facilities and we're going to have a follow-up meeting with some booster parents who have some input on what, what does it look like on their end as well. But that's a different question and I can, we can add that to the next agenda. And, you know, so the big question is, is the stipended, is the stipend amount correct? And I think that was a memorandum, I'll have to check because it's an HPTA stipend, so I think it's a memorandum. Yeah, so if we.
And on the duties actually matching the job description.
That's right.
Right. Okay.
That's primarily what he wanted.
Great.
Yeah. And the other thing was also on the personnel matters, we're hiring a wrestling coach. I heard you say we're reinstituting the wrestling program. How much does the wrestling program cost in the district? Do we still have the mats or do we have to buy a whole mat set?
We have to buy the mats.
So what's that going to cost the district?
I think, oh, I don't want to jump off the top of my head. I think the mats, I can get that to you. I don't want to throw out a number. I think I have a number in my head. Eric and I talked about it. But I think they're around 8,000, but don't quote me on it. I can get that. And then it would be whatever contests, I guess I don't need to speak extra loud just because you're in Poland, do I? I'm yelling. Can you hear me, Doug?
Doug has to speak up a little because I'm having a hard time hearing him.
Yes. And then, since it's a JV program, there's a, a cost to the league, but I can further get you the costs. We do have a surplus in our athletic budget because of the repayment that we received. So I'll get the cost of the mats and any cost of the, I'm sorry, I do have that, so I, I wasn't, I should have brought it.
Do we know where we're going to store the mats?
Hyde Park Elementary for now. In the gym.
Okay.
And then when this program goes to the high school, are they going to use the same mat?
Yes. It's, it's one, most schools have just one mat and the JV and varsity team practice together. We're not going to get a, a second set of mats. Too much space anyway.
Okay.
Okay, any other question? Any, any other discussion?
I had one other discussion. I'm sorry, Jeff, I thought that's the one you were referring to. I want, I just wanted to talk about the change in the calendar that's on for readoption. There's a big hullabaloo going around in New York State. There was what we're calling the infamous April memo that came down from SED seemingly out of nowhere, reiterating rules that most of us were unfamiliar with and not a part of standard operating business and also not part of what was our understanding or interpretation. After much back and forth with state education department, the state education department committed to look at this next year. They'll form a committee, they'll review the whole thing. And the bottom line was in June, we got another memo saying, we're sticking to our guns even though we know this affects everybody in New York State. Even if you've already adopted your calendar and you're doing what you've been doing for years, you have to get as close as possible to compliance for the 17 and 18 school year. So I reviewed our current calendar and the regulations as outlined and reiterated in the April memo. And the impact on the district and the change is that we had started a couple of years ago to bring our kindergarten students in about four days after the first through 12th grade students so that we could do the screening. So the students, the families would make appointments and come in and we would screen all the kindergarten children, but the official's first day for kindergarten was four days later. We can't do that without losing state aid. So we will bring the, we will have, we'll go back to where we were three years ago with the kindergarten students starting the same day as everybody else. And we'll just come up with a different plan for screening. The next thing was the question of half-day early releases. So I reviewed all our early release plans and all of our half-day plans. And there were two changes that needed to be made there. One is that when you looked at the regulations for early release and the number of hours that students have to be in school for the week, we were out of compliance by a half hour for our K through five students. So Linda and I talked to George and we said, what would be the impact if on an early release day, we held on to our K through five kids for a half hour longer that day? He said, no impact, can totally do it, fine. So we can adjust the elementary early release times by a half hour. And then we are mandated to have 180 days and we plan for 183 days. So the other block of early release days is at the end of the school year in June. And if we backtrack from the last day of school where we have those half-days, we can eliminate three of the half-days because they're not even mandated. We're, we're going to school extra. Where we kind of hit a sticking point is that for whatever reason in the district for quite a few years, Havilin Middle School had one additional half-day the last week of June. So we had to change the calendar to say that on June 19th, all students would be in school for the full session. So those are the changes to the calendar. The one area that I am not recommending a change for next year because there were, it was fraught with issues in multiple areas and unclear guidance from the state was our two early release days prior to the Thanksgiving break. And those are early release days for parent-teacher conferences. There was language about early release days on a four-day week, on a five-day week, not a lot of guidance on the Thanksgiving week. So we're going to keep the parent-teacher conferences Thanksgiving week, but anticipate that there'll be maybe more guidance the following year and we may need to rethink having parent-teacher conferences on Thanksgiving week. So as much as humanly possible, we're in compliance with not too much pain. Some districts were much worse off with how they were scheduling things, but I tried to get us into as much compliance as I possibly could for the coming year. So those changes would need to be made to ensure that in the Thanksgiving week is a little gray, but I think we can live with that.
Okay. Any more discussion? No? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. So that should bring us down to 1701. May I have a motion for special education placement?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Deanna?
I've reviewed the pack and recommend this adoption as presented. And thankfully, I'm being assured by Aviva that this is, we're over the hump.
Some summer meetings, not many.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for 1702, long-term substitute teaching appointments?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? Any, any questions on the, on the amounts? No? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And motion for 1703, lease renewal, town of Hyde Park's senior citizen?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
It's, so do we actually receive rent on this one or is this one that we provide?
Nope.
Good.
Go ahead, Linda.
They pay $3,500 a year.
Okay.
There you go.
Really good deal for them.
Oh, for space, yeah.
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 All right, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion for 1704, service agreement for Sanctuary, Thankuary Institute? I had to really read this thing three times. Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
All right, could I get a two-sentence description?
Yes.
Yeah, I read this over and over.
This is the third year of the contract and we had made a three-year commitment. And this has been all of the training we've done. I mean, these are all the commitments here, we're with all the admin team. We trained all the 12-month employees this morning out of this contract. This is really about building a climate to provide the kind of structure that is more of a healing environment for kids who have been traumatized and the recognition that adults also walk around with some of that and that if there's trauma to the individual is like chronic stress to the organization. So organizations that are not actively having a language and a conversation around how to take care of one another, how to treat one another, are really adding to an atmosphere that can even make things worse for. things worse for, for kids. So it's, it's our, it's our final year with our consultant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And may I have a motion for 1705, A&amp;T Healthcare Agreement?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions on that, please?
Another two-sentence.
Yep. This is for one very medically fragile student who can't, who needs that nursing care during school hours.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion for 1706, Marcus Richardson TCIS Consultant Consultation Service Agreement.
And I'm happy to do it.
Some move.
Some move.
Second.
Any, any discussion on that one?
Yep. Yep. So, really quick, we had an agreement when we've been having...
You could start with the acronym, too.
Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for Schools, which we've talked a lot, about a lot with the therapy dog conversation. And now that we have combined our strategic planning group, the coherence planning DLT group, and are doing professional development planning with teachers, one of the things that came up was that in, that ideally, school districts are training staff every year in some kind of how do you manage difficult behavior. And so we've done, used our, our trainers ourselves to do this training. It just so happens that one is on leave and we're doing the training after. So this was someone highly recommended from Rich Hresniak, who did our foundation training at the beginning and trained our trainers. And so we just start paying him the same rate. It's actually only for one day. So we put a limit on the contract for, as if we were gonna bring him back, but, but I, I don't see the need. And he's gonna train all the aides. And I believe it's all of Haviland, and then I think, or FDR and the other group is gonna be with our in-house trainers that get a, a regular presenting fee, who are teachers.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. So here's your refunding serial bonds agreement. May I have a motion for 1707?
Some move.
Second.
Any question? Any more questions? We've discussed that. Hopefully, we make some money on this. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Oh, we're back to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Opposed? Would anybody like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. There's no other matters. Upcoming meetings, not too many of them, I hope. There's two. Do you wanna know what they are? Steve?
No.
No. Okay, Thursday, August 24th, 6:00 PM, regular board meeting here at the district office. Thursday, 8:31, three days later, uh, oh, six days, seven days later, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. 6:00 PM is a, an initial board meeting if needed.
There's any cleanup personnel work to do.
It mostly is, yeah, for personnel stuff. All right. So there's no need for another executive session. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Probably not. All in favor? Nobody's opposed? That's good. Thank you, Steve.